Good evening, welcome to the April 6, 2016, meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We have a quorum present, so I'll call the meeting to order. Before we start on the regular agenda, I want to recognize some guests that we have here tonight. I'm showing four guests, unless I miss somebody, that are visiting us for their leadership or otherford obligations. Excuse me. We have Kaylee Rodriguez, Adam Love, Janine Kim, and Will Kane. Did I miss anybody? Well, thank you very much for coming. If we have any other names, you'll bring them up, I'll be glad to list those two. But, thank you for coming, and I hope you drank coffee before you came, so you can stay awake. Okay, we have Senior Planner, Mr. Robert Hayes with us tonight. Welcome, filling in, Robert Lewis, for, filling in for young Matthew Blomley, who I think we have an announcement. Margaret Ann?
We do. This past Monday, April 4th, and if they'll go ahead and pull a photo up on the laptop here, Matthew, Sarah, and Nate Blomley welcomed a new member of their family. This is Rose Vivian Blomley, and they're gonna call her Rosie. Rosie is healthy and strong, at eight pounds, five ounces, 20.5 inches, and she was born at 9:29 a.m. Whole family's doing well, and Nate is glad to be a big brother. And you can see, she's a healthy little girl.
She sure is. Well, may she be a future Blue Raider or Auburn Tiger. So, we'll get into our regular agenda now. We have, first thing on here is to approve the minutes of January 20th, 2016, and March 2nd, 2016. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, I'll claim them approved as submitted. We have four public hearings scheduled this evening, the first of which is a zoning application for approximately nine and a half acres located along Last Cassis Pike and North Rutherford Boulevard to be rezoned from PCD to CF. George Huddleston Jr. is the applicant. Ms. Green?
Thank you, sir. Our first public hearing this evening is for you to consider a zoning application that's been submitted, and it is for you to consider rezoning property, which is a little less than 10 acres, so nine and a half acres, from its current PCD zone, Planned Commercial District, to CF, Commercial Fringe District. This property is located along Last Cassis Pike and along North Rutherford Boulevard, and along Old Last Cassis Pike, as you can see. The property to the south is zoned Local Commercial District and Multifamily Residential District, and is the location of the United Pentecostal Church. The properties to the east are zoned CF, Commercial Fringe District, and is currently undeveloped, and there's also property zoned RM12, Multifamily District, and is the location of the Bel Air Baptist Church. The properties to the west are zoned CL, and are developed with gasoline sales service station, a restaurant, and vehicle wash. Also to the west are properties zoned Multifamily, and developed with apartments. And then to the north, properties are zoned CH, that's Highway Commercial District, and is the location of the Kroger Shopping Center, Kroger Store, and Shopping Center, and gasoline stations, and out parcels. This property is being requested to be zoned to CF, that's Commercial Fringe District. The Kroger is zoned CH, which is Highway Commercial District, and that CH zone allows more uses than the CF zone. The CF zone is something you would traditionally see transition from a heavier use to a residential area, perhaps. This property was zoned CF, CL, and RM16, before it was zoned PCD. The majority of the property was zoned CF, with a smaller portion CL and Multifamily. It was rezoned in 2004 to allow a grocery store to develop with retail shops, and you may recall the Harris Teeter was being proposed here. Also proposed with the PCD were some out parcels with a future pharmacy and an additional retail shop. And I've included some exhibits of the PCD in your program, or in your packet, so you can review those. I've also included a list of uses that are permitted in the CF district. As you are aware, the property has not developed with a Harris Teeter grocery store, and sometime after this was zoned PCD, Kroger actually acquired Harris Teeter, and there are no plans at all for Harris Teeter to be constructed here. The Kroger wasn't located here either, when the property was zoned PCD, so there's been some change in the area, including the development of a grocery store. Across this property is a creek which Councilman Young's very familiar with, the Little Garrison Creek. It has a name, but it's also known as the Little Big Ditch, which is currently an unnamed tributary of the Bushman Creek. And it's identified as a water of the state, so any development that happens on this property will have to conform with their water quality protection ordinance, and they'll have to respect that and conform with the state's regulations as well. I have not been made aware of any specific development plan for this property. They know, though, that the plan, the PCD plan that they have now, they don't have any takers for that, and so think they have a better opportunity to develop this property if it were zoned back to a bulk zone to CF. The applicants did hold a neighborhood meeting to consider this item, and there weren't very many people who came to that, and so I don't know what that is a sign of, but they did have some good questions, I believe, got those answered the night of the public hearing. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them, otherwise you should conduct a public hearing prior to making your recommendation to City Council.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Green? Okay. Excuse me, my allergies are working on me tonight. Before I open the public hearing, let me briefly go over how we conduct the public hearing. We'll open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak either for or against the proposal. Please come to the microphone, state your name, and give your address, if you would, for the record. Keep your comments to no more than three minutes, if you don't mind, and make any comments to the Planning Commission if you have questions. We'll try to get the staff to answer those at the conclusion of the public hearing. All that being said, I'll open the public hearing at this time for this matter to be discussed. Anybody that'd like to talk, please come on up. Nobody?
Ms. Green, can you put the map back up, please?
Yes, sir. We'll send the cable department.
Okay. If nobody coming forward, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Young?
It's going from PCD to Commercial Fringe, which is consistent with the property on the south and on the east of it.
It is.
Okay. That's what I want to know.
Any questions from members of the Planning Commission?
Mr. Chairman, hearing done, I move for approval.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Second item is an annexation plan of services and annexation petition for approximately .59 acres located along Veterans Parkway. Mary Reed is the applicant. Ms. Green?
Thank you, sir. This next item is for you to consider an annexation petition, and separately, an annexation plan of services for which you can make one motion on both items, but you are considering those as two separate items. And it's for property located along Veterans Parkway, and that's shown on the map on the screen before you. It may be difficult for you to see the property, especially maybe at this distance, because it's really a strip of property. The, on this map, the property that's shaded yellow are properties that are currently within Murfreesboro city limits. Properties that are white or not shaded a color are in the unincorporated area of Rutherford County. The area for which annexation's being requested, and we have received a petition for this annexation, is shaded blue, and that is located just south of the Cloister subdivision, which is a city, single-family subdivision. In 2013, the majority of these properties, or this property, was annexed. There was a 30-foot strip left out between the Cloister and this property to leave a gap, so that, I think technically, we wouldn't be encircling areas in Rutherford County. And the property was also zoned Multifamily Residential District. There is a companion zoning change request, which is the subject of the very next public hearing, but not of this public hearing, to consider changing the zone for this property. And that, that changes to a commercial zone, and when they were laying out their plans, they discovered that a potential layout had part of this building located in the strip, which means part of it would be in Rutherford County, and part of it would be in the city of Murfreesboro. As a matter of, I think, cleaning jurisdictional lines, they wanted to have any potential area that may contain a building to be, all be located within Murfreesboro city limits, so that they wouldn't need to get both the Rutherford County Planning Commission and the City of Murfreesboro Planning Commission to review and approve any future plans here. So, they had came to us and wanted for you to consider reducing that 30-foot strip to a 10-foot strip, so annexing a 20-foot wide strip of that property, which consists, which is a portion of seven acres. The property is contiguous with current city limits, so it does touch current city limits along the southern property line. It's within the city's urban growth boundary, and we have received a petition for annexation. The adjacent right-of-way of Veterans Parkway is also included in the annexation study, and you can see, it's just a sliver. An annexation plan of services has been included in your materials for your review, and if you have any questions, we'll be glad to answer them. The plan of services does identify that we'll be able to provide services to the property within a reasonable amount of time. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. Otherwise, you should conduct a public hearing on the matter of the plan of services and the annexation petition.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Green? Okay, if not, I'll open the public hearing for this matter, and ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. In that case, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions or comments by members of the Planning Commission? If there are none, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for approval of the annexation plan of services and the annexation petition.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. The third public hearing today is a zoning application for approximately .55 acres located along Veterans Parkway to be zoned CF simultaneous with annexation, and approximately 6.5 acres to be rezoned from RM16 to CF. Mary Reed is the applicant. Ms. Green?
Thank you, sir. This next item is a companion to the previous agenda item, as I mentioned. It is for property located along Veterans Parkway, and the property is located along the eastern side of Veterans Parkway, about 1,600 feet north of the intersection with Franklin Road, which is also, Old Fort Parkway, which is also Highway 96. It's directly south of the Cloister single-family subdivision. This entire parcel consists of seven acres, and is developed with one single-family residence addressed as 4546 Veterans Parkway. The rear portion of this property does contain a portion of the floodway and the floodplain of overall creek, and that's why, and you can see that on the map before you, and you can see the curvature of the property line as a result of overall creek. The majority of this property was annexed in 2013, as I mentioned before, and was zoned RM16. And RM16 is Multifamily Residential District, which permits a density of 16 dwelling units per acre by right, and additional units can be gained with density bonuses if they applied for that. At that time, 30-foot strip was left out, however, the application, the previous application was for you to consider adding that 20-foot strip back into the city, so that's why the application is two parts. It's to zone approximately .55 acres CF simultaneous with the annexation, and then the property that's already in the city limits is about 6.5 acres, and it's to rezone that from Multifamily Residential District to CF Commercial Fringe District. The CH zoning was approved for some of the parcels to the south, and you can see that on the map before you. There's a CF parcel directly contiguous with this property, and just south of that are properties zoned CH. The properties that are directly on the corner of Veterans Parkway and Franklin Road is the future site of a Kroger grocery store, and I don't believe it's open yet, but it is under construction. CH zoning was approved for two or three parcels, and then after discussion by the City Council, the parcel directly adjacent to the subject property was zoned CF, and you can see that, instead of CH, in order to provide a transition from the CH to the Cloister single-family residential subdivision. The applicant also owns the CF zone property to the south, and it's his desire to expand the CF zoning north for future potential commercial activity. The applicants did hold a neighborhood meeting for this item, which was well-attended, and there were very good questions at that meeting. You should conduct a public hearing prior to making your recommendation to City Council regarding the zoning change request. I will, for a moment, pull up the Black Men Community Land Use Plan, and the Future Land Use Map recommends that this area develop with medium-density residential uses for the subject parcel, and it defines medium-density residential as planned areas of single-family homes and attached or zero lot lines with a density of four to eight dwelling units per acre. His zoning request is not consistent with the recommendation, however, the plan also recommends strong support for nodal commercial development patterns centered on major street intersections. So, in fact, the Future Land Use Map of the plan recommends that the intersection of Veterans and Franklin Road, just the south, develop as local commercial node. The Planning Commission needs to determine whether or not the zoning of the subject property to CF is an appropriate extension of this commercial node and appropriate deviation from the recommendations of the plans of the Future Land Use Map. And then, again, if you have any questions, we'll be glad to answer them, otherwise you should conduct a public hearing.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Green?
Ms. Green, could you give us some examples of what would fall under CF zoning?
Sure. CF zoning allows most types of commercial uses, and it, let me see, I have actually a handy chart that I've prepared, and that'll might help you. So, it would allow items such as an antique mall, pharmacies, bakeries, banks, catering establishments, department or discount stores, financial services, so that would be various types in addition to banks. It would allow gas stations. It would allow offices, and I mentioned pharmacies. It would allow restaurants. It would allow retail shops. It would allow neighborhood shopping centers, which are those that are less than 25,000 square feet, so not the larger ones, but the smaller ones. It would allow both veterinary offices and veterinary clinics, and various types of institutional uses, daycares, churches, daycare homes, country clubs, some types of housing, but very limited amounts of housing, and self-storage facilities would be permitted by special-use permit. It's, of course, the CF zone, anything that's permitted in the CF zone would be allowed if you chose to change the zoning to CF, but the applicant did present some kind of plan that indicated they had a desire for self-storage facilities, and then, I think, some office and retail as well.
And, why would it be advantageous to have a Commercial Fringe versus a planned development, so that we would be able to control maybe more for the neighborhood what would go on that property?
Their request is to have a bulk zone, so that they can have more flexibility with the, with the design and the proposed uses. Now, Mr. Reed is here as well, and I believe he could probably speak to that if he'd like. He doesn't have a specific plan, but he has a concept plan, which he has shown to people, and so if it was zoned PCD, it would be held specifically to that plan, and I think that his desire is to be a bulk zone.
Okay, thank you.
One of the problems with the planned district that we've seen in years past is they think they know what they have going in there, and then that doesn't happen. They have to come back through the whole process again to change the whole thing again, and we've kind of gone between, seems like bulk zoning and planned zoning several times in the years I've been on the Planning Commission, but obviously, when they don't have a plan for it in place at the time of the application, there's no way they can do a planned district.
But, I've just witnessed, as firsthand experience with Sulfur Springs and Northfield over there, where the neighborhood that I live in has property in it that is planned development, and we just went through the process of a neighborhood meeting, and I think it went extremely well with the neighborhood finding some compromise and finding the ability to come up with something that really works well on the property, that adds quality of life to the neighborhood, as well as protects some of the concerns that neighborhoods sometimes have when you have commercial developments. I mean, it's nice to have that buffer between sometimes when you have the commercial and residential side by side, and it, and I think that's probably the reason this was multifamily at one time, was to add a buffer between the Commercial Fringe and the residential. But, you know, I'm not saying I'm opposed to it or for it, I just, I sometimes think that by being a little more tied on the zoning that we give it, we have more control over what actually, how it's developed, and that is advantageous to the people who live in those neighborhoods.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Not at all. I'm asking anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Any other questions or comments by members of the Planning Commission?
Not to piggyback on necessarily on what Mr. Smotherman said, but, so, just give us an idea of the buffering that would be required between Commercial Fringe and, is it either RS15 or RS12 that's there next to it?
Yes, sir. I believe a minimum type C buffer would be required, which is 12 foot wide and has double row of evergreen plantings, so they would have to have the minimum type C buffer, which is a landscape buffer there between the two uses.
And would that buffer fall on the property that's inside the corporate city limits, or would it go extend over to the 10-foot strip?
It can go within that 10-foot strip, so it wouldn't be the 10-foot plus the 12-foot, for a total of 22. They could put the landscape buffer in that unincorporated strip.
Okay.
And if, if we wanted to do something different than that, and I'm not saying we do or don't, we could look at that at site plan, correct?
So, you, Planning Commission has the authority, when they review the site plan, to require additional buffer or changes to the site plan if they believe that it's needed for multifamily development, so you may, in addition to distance and landscaping type, you may want to discuss the orientation of buildings and keeping those patios, oftentimes what you, you mentioned, that you want to keep those patios out of people's backyards. But, this isn't multifamily, this is commercial, sorry. I was thinking multifamily for a moment.
Ms. Jones, do you have a question?
So, did you mention that there was a neighborhood meeting?
There was a neighborhood meeting.
And was there anybody, some staff there?
Uh-huh. Gary Whitaker was there, and there were about 20, I think 20 residents who showed up.
There was, and Mr. Clyde Roundtree with Huddleston Steel had talked about the potential change of use in the strip, and then Mr. Reed had addressed basically the neighbors' questions and concerns, and, not that there is a definite plan, but he had talked to them about what his plans were for the, for the land, and explained that he'd been a family for quite some time, and that his intention was to develop it, and he went through his development, or at least what he would perceive his development to be. There was a lot of questions, a lot of good questions. By the end of the meeting, most of the consensus was that they were happy that they had somebody that was willing to work with them. There were some comments about how they just soon have some type of retail versus a lot of apartments there, so there was a lot of good feedback back and forth, and pretty much consensus from the people that had showed up is that they were acceptance of the change of use. Now, that's definitely not a planned development, but the scheme, if you would, that, or general plan that he had kind of presented, his ideas was well-received.
And did that include, I guess, the, the storage maybe in the back part?
Yes.
And retail up on the front?
Yes. In fact, what he had talked about was retail on the front that actually backs up to the property line with a buffer, no access, no roads, is how he described it, that basically it'd just be a back door for egress out of the strip center. In front of that, if you would, toward the new Kroger they're building, there'd be more of office-type use there, with access road coming in, and then basically the self-storage in the rear portion, and there were some neighbor concerns about the rear portion, but a lot of those lots, it didn't affect because of the floodway, comes so far up in there, and to fill that property, to try to use it, would be probably not economically feasible, so it'll actually stop short, it will not be able to run all the way to the rear of the property line. He also talked about putting a privacy fence up behind the retail, and then some type of secure fence for the secure storage, I believe is pretty much how it was explained at the meeting.
Those are his plans, though. It's just a concept, it's not something that we can hold them to. The thing that is, is constant is the floodway and floodplain, we know that's there, and our design standards will address that, but the concept plan, just to clarify, is just an idea.
And that, and I was basically trying to reiterate what the conversation was at the meeting. We have no submitted plan, but Mr. Reed is here, if you'd like to ask him to talk about his plan.
Would, was there any discussion regarding, like, Commercial Local versus Commercial Fringe, and the, what he's looking at, would those uses fall in a Commercial Local or not?
Some of those would fall in Commercial Local. We, as staff, tend for several years to recommend the Commercial Fringe over the Commercial Local. The Commercial Local is a holdover zone from our old zoning ordinance, and the Commercial Local zone would allow you to develop it with quads or complexes, where Commercial Fringe wouldn't.
Oh, it's kind of a...
And it's, it's kind of a weird zone.
Mm-hmm. And so, Commercial Fringe, what, what is like the worst-case scenario on a Commercial Fringe?
I think that the way a building looks can make something that you might not like a good use, so if they've designed it well, then it can be better, and this is me, the subjective here.
That's true. I'm sorry, that's probably not a fair question.
Well, you could have the nicest restaurant in Murfreesboro, but if the dumpster's in your backyard, then it's not a good location for the person who lives on that property that has the dumpster in their backyard.
And Commercial Fringe has some regulations regarding dumpsters, and if you did have gas station, that the, or speaker boxes, they have to be located away from the residence, where CH doesn't have those additional regulations, but the CF does, because it's anticipated being located near residence. You know, there are quite a few residents here, but the design has to take into account the services, and they have to be located opposite of the, of the homes.
And I'll go back to the pluses of the planned development. The property on the corner of Sulfur Springs Road and Northfield had been planned in the past to be a strip mall, and it was approved with a planned development on it. Now, when the, the economy went south in 2008, and they said, "No, we're not going to do that project," they've come back now with, I think, something that's equal to or even better than, as far as the use of the property, and, but the reason that they had to come back was because they didn't have the freedom of just saying, "It's wide open, we can do anything that's allowed under Commercial Fringe." And because they had to come back and present another development, then the neighborhood was protected, and the neighborhood got a second neighborhood meeting, and they agreed. The fact that Gary says they had a neighborhood meeting, and that none of those people showed up for the public hearing speaks volumes for, apparently, Mr. Roundtree's presentation to appease those people to the point that none of them came to not to speak against it. But, the problem is, is Mr. Reed may have the best intentions in the world, and I hope he does, but if, if he were to change his mind, or the economy were to go south again, and he don't do the project, then the property will continue to have whatever zoning that we're changing it to, and with that change, it's wide open for anything that falls under that zoning. And so, it wouldn't be anybody having to come back to us and say, "I've changed the plans, and I'm now going to put a strip mall down through there in somebody's backyard, and a restaurant on the other end of it," and, and some uses that they may not be as welcoming to as what was presented to them in their neighborhood meeting. And so, I just, you know, the fact that nobody's here, I'm gonna vote for it, but the, but I do think that there's, we're going down a slippery slope when we start zoning things to, you know, it's kind of like the Walmart on Memorial, for example, 28 years ago, it was on Commercial Highway. When they said, "We're gonna build a Walmart on it," didn't need anybody to, you know, it didn't go before the council or anybody for approval. It was Commercial Highway, and it was done. It was taken care of 28 years ago, and somebody said, "Well, why'd you approve it?" We didn't approve it, it was done 28 years ago.
So, the planning, it did go before the Planning Commission, but I, this brings up a good point. On Monday, we had a kickoff meeting for the Design Guideline Steering Committee, and, and part of our hope is that from that, there are some standards that are adopted that can give some assurances to the community that some standards will be met. And I think some of what makes people comfortable with the planned development are the design standards, and some of them we don't have now, but I think that when the Steering Committee reviews that, hopefully they'll be able to recommend some design standards that we can adopt as a community, that can, I think, add some comfort there, where it doesn't need to be something that goes to City Council. Planned developments are best for unique properties, for things that don't fit into traditional zoning, for game changers, or for odd circum... for game changers, or for odd circumstances, it's the best place for planned development. And really, ideally, we should have regulations that could add that level of comfort for city council on planning commission. I'm hoping Mrs. Jones is on that steering committee, and I'm hoping that they're going to come up with something that's going to help us with that. And I believe that buffering, additional buffering probably will be one of those subjects that are discussed. And, and I agree with you, there, you know, there are concerns that we want to know that people are going to be protected who live there, who live next door.
Okay, any other questions or comments? No, we're ready for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve.
Second.
Motion's made, and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. The final public hearing today is a zoning application for approximately .43 acres located at 1216 North Maple Street to be rezoned from a PCD to commercial fringe. Nancy E. Brown is the applicant, Ms. Green.
Yes, sir, this final public hearing this evening is for you to consider a zoning change request, and it's for property that's approximately .4 acres, and it's located at the intersection, and quite an odd intersection if you look at the map, but of North Maple Street and West McKnight Drive. You can see it's very near the intersection with Memorial Boulevard as well. And of course, McKnight crosses Memorial here. And the property is currently zoned PCD, planned commercial district. Their request is for you to consider changing the zone from PCD to CF, commercial fringe district. And it's developed with a single-family residence and a dance studio. The dance studio is located in an addition that was constructed behind the original single-family home. Prior to 2003, the subject property was zoned RD, and that's residential duplex district. And at that time, it only contained a single-family dwelling. In 2003, it was rezoned from RD to PCD, planned commercial district, in order to allow the construction and operation of a dance studio only. The PCD zoning limits the permitted uses on the property to only single-family residents and a dance studio. So the dance studio is still in operation at this time, but will be closing in June. And the owner is wanting to put this on the market and sell it around that time, and believes that with the current PCD zoning, that allows only a single-family home and a dance studio, that it will be difficult to sell this property. Her request, Ms. Brown's request, is to rezone the property from its current planned commercial district to CF, commercial fringe district, which would permit additional commercial uses. Directly in front of the subject property is, of course, the intersection with Memorial Boulevard and West McKnight Drive and North Maple. The uses in front of the subject property along Memorial Boulevard are zoned CH, Commercial Highway District. To the southwest of the subject property, across North Maple Street, is the Blue Coast Burrito Restaurant, as well as a barber shop and a sign company. Those are zoned CH, Commercial Highway District. To the north of the subject property, across West McKnight Drive, is a real estate office and a Christian Science reading room and bookstore, which are also zoned CH. The subject property is bordered on its east and south side by single-family residents, which are zoned RD, residential duplex. And then this, I did want to point out that this property is zoned PCD and allows residential and commercial uses. If zoned to CF, Commercial Fringe District, residential uses are not permitted by right. And Mrs. Brown is aware of that, and so long as she continues to reside in the home, that would be permitted. But once nobody lives there anymore and it loses any, any of that grandfather status, then that would not be a use that's permitted by right, so it would need to be strictly used as a use that's permitted in the CF district. The PCD zoning, of course, allows exceptions to be made to our general standards. And the current PCD zoning allowed a reduced, not a buffer, and a reduced perimeter planting yard. And so since that was allowed, it would be considered a lawfully established, non-conforming use. There may be situations that the future user may need to add additional parking spaces, and those would need to conform with our guidelines in our zoning district. And they are aware of that as well. Mrs. Brown is here this evening, if you have any questions from her. Otherwise, you should conduct your public hearing and formulate a recommendation to city council. And we'll, of course, be glad to answer any questions. I think Mr. Whitaker is not going to answer any questions regarding this application since he was involved in the construction of that addition, and just, just to make you aware.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Green?
I do, so I think you've already answered my question, but if, if the zoning changes, there would be no requirement for additional parking spaces or anything to do with the fact that she may or may not meet the current requirements associated with that zone?
If the zoning change doesn't affect the parking, but if the proposed user, say somebody purchases it and wishes to use it for a different use that requires the same amount of parking, then nothing changes. If they are proposing a use that requires more parking, then they will need to submit a site plan showing that additional parking.
So the use that she has now, if she continues to have it under this zone, the parking piece, that doesn't change any?
It doesn't change.
Okay, all right.
Okay, any other questions?
One more question, but so you said that if it gets rezoned to CF, then it, once she sells it, it cannot be used residential at all?
Residence, a single-family residence is not a permitted use in the CF district. If somebody's living there, then it's a lawfully established, non-conforming use, and they can continue to live there. But if somebody ceases living there for a certain time period, then it cannot be used, single-family, at all.
So if she sells it? Even if somebody else moves in and keeps living there?
Somebody could keep living there so long as there's, uh-huh. There's a period of time, and I think, I don't, it's the state, I think it's maybe like three years that somebody can't live there anymore. But if the use changes and nobody lives there, then it loses that status. But say she was renting it to somebody, she sold it to somebody else who wanted to continue renting it, then that would be fine. I just like to make people aware that that use isn't permitted, so they don't think they're losing anything.
Anybody else? Okay, I'll open the public hearing, asking anybody to come to the microphone that'd like to speak.
Mr. Chairman, members, my name is Nancy Brown. I reside at 1216 North Maple Street. My property has been zoned planned commercial development since 2003. It's a very unique piece of property, highly visible from Memorial, McKnight, North Maple Street, surrounded pretty much by Commercial Highway. It is a two-lot, they have been combined, but there is plenty of access for someone to build on if they care to, or to add additional parking. We have a privacy fence up right now around everything, but that landscaping buffer that would be needed for commercial fringe is already in place behind that fence. In keeping with the integrity of this community, and I was told by Mr. Adalot many years ago that that is a gateway to downtown, and my property is a gateway to downtown. And I feel like that, looking towards my retirement and what might happen to that piece of property, that zoning at commercial fringe is in the best interest for the integrity of Murphysboro and the way things look. If I were to, half of my property split down the middle is build the commercial codes, the other half is a dwelling, but it is actually has all the handicapped access and everything needed to make that dwelling commercial if someone wanted to. I feel like if I had requested to rezone it back to residential duplex, that that would not keep with the integrity of downtown and what goes on in the way properties look. I felt like commercial fringe would ensure you being able to control how that property looks and what goes in there when I do sell it. I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Anybody else? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Discussion about the planning commission.
Under the current zoning, a lot of parking, how much is there a lot of parking for PCD versus CF?
PCD basically writes its own ticket, and I don't recall how many parking spaces are on the site, although I'm sure Mrs. Brown can tell us.
Eight.
Eight spaces. It's based on the square footage of the dance studio, not of just of the house.
Any other questions?
So, changing the zone, it was already a PCD, go to commercial fringe. The buffering piece doesn't change with respects to the change of the zone either, is that a correct statement?
Nothing will change unless the use changes and requires more. It can stay just like it is.
Okay.
I asked Mrs. Brown if she reached out to her neighbors, and she said they were supportive, although there's nobody here.
Okay, if there's no other questions, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval.
Motion's been made for approval, is there a second?
Aye.
Is that second?
Aye.
Okay, I think we have a second. All in favor say second, no, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries, I think. Thankfully, that concludes the public hearing portion of our agenda tonight. Move on to staff reports and other business. Mr. Whitaker, do you have something?
Ms. Green, I believe, is going to talk to you about the packet, or I can't either.
I placed on your desk a revised General's Landing Plan Development Program Book. Mr. Whitaker was adamant that the planning commission see this before it go to city council for public hearing. You may remember the public hearing, there were some changes that were requested to be made to the PRD program book as it was submitted. That evening, they came with a concept plan that changed the way that the property was laid out. And so this is for you to look at, review for your information, to see if they've incorporated those changes. Mr. Whitaker worked directly with Mr. Roundtree to incorporate those changes. Please look it over and let us know if there's anything in there you think that we may have missed that was discussed the evening of the public hearing. This has not gone to council, but will be going very soon, as in a couple of weeks.
Chairman, I'd like to point out just a few of those things, because it has been a little while. The ditch that they're going to put in between the adjacent established residential subdivision.
Between it and North Borough Court.
It is North, North Borough, and that is actually shown on now, we wanted them to show on that, on there. Also, the buffering that was located on the front of the property, given illustration, show where the buffering would be, the landscaping around the retention area, and.
The parking for four cars.
Yeah, the parking, to show that it would adequately park four cars for each of the units. And then another item, I believe, was the end units needed to actually face Thompson Lane, and they were supposed to address that, that those, that they predominantly, you know, had an appearance of a front, if you would, and beefed up landscaping across the front between the Thompson Lane and the development.
So you're comfortable with it now, Mr. Whitaker?
We went through several renditions, but yes, I am.
Okay, yes, sir.
Mr. Whitaker, the, the large green space in the middle, that is a green space?
From my understanding, that is just an open green space.
Open area.
And there was one other, they had asked for a, not on the established residential side, but on the opposite property line, they had asked to downgrade to a smaller buffer, and we said we wanted to maintain, I believe, as a type C buffer, if I recall correctly. And they had made that change in there as well.
Thank you, Mr. Whitaker, I appreciate you bringing that back to us. Any other questions or comments?
If you have any comments, if you would, please get those back to us so we can make sure we address them before it goes to the city council.
I think, the only comment that I would like to make is, I think anytime that a future development can have a positive impact on an existing development, you know, this is a win-win. I know there was a lot, we had a lot of discussion at the public hearing, and hopefully this ditch will have an impact on North Borough Court, because that was a lot of water folks that were in those people's yards.
They had some great photos showing the water.
Absolutely, they did a very good job in their presentation.
This may help their situation quite a bit, hopefully.
According to the engineer, that ditch is actually going to take, I think, for those first six or seven lots, is actually going to take, take that water that you saw those pictures of. And he's actually already shot that and done the cross-section and has provided that information to us. So it will greatly increase the drainage and reduce the ponding of the water on the front of that property.
Good point, Ms. Schallburn, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, you don't need any action from us, so I think that's all the comments we have, Mr. Whitaker. Any other business, Mr. Whitaker?
None other at this time.
Nothing else? Nothing? Senior Planner Lewis? Junior Planner Green?
Not me.
There's no further business, we stand adjourned.